Beginning this action, regular school committee meeting Monday, April 3rd, 6:00 PM. According to the agenda, executive session, not required at this time. Salute to the flag, Mr. Walsh, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the name of justice for all.
School committee members and student reports, school committee chair report, I have nothing at this time. Resource committee.
Resource. We met on February 28th and we approved the minutes of February 28th. We met on March 21st. We had grants to submit and accept. Motion to accept grants of $154,263 accelerated literacy learning with high-quality instruction material grant by Jim Walsh, second by Peter Stevens, all in favor. Motion to accept four donations by Mr. Walsh, Mr. Stevens, $1,000 from Enterprise Bank, $15,000 from DCU Credit Union, $1,000 from Rollstone Charitable Foundations. Mr. Walsh, I'd like to thank all the companies for the donations. Enrollment update, Nick Packard, our enrollment has stayed steady since 2010. Mr. Roach, if we look at out of district public versus in-state parochial students, could be, we could see what the demographics are of the students attending parochial schools. Mr. Packard, we could probably get some of that data, but not going back to 2010. Now information is submitted to DESI before it was up to us to call each school and try to collect the data. We had a substitute rate change, currently looking at increasing in rate for such, for the nurses for the summer program. And looking at the increasing a bit for the teachers who work in the summer program. Budget, 2024 increase, we are currently looking at staffing increase, moving instructional supplies into the general fund, increased salary rollover increase. We are also looking at possible 17% increase to sped transportation, but that is an indirect increase to the city. The SOA does help put us in a better position. We are meeting with each principal to go over the needs and wants. That's it for the resource.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Any questions? Seeing none, school building needs, Mr. Stevens.
Building needs, we met on March 21st, approved the minutes. School building maintenance update, Joe Richardson, superintendent, gave us an update issue with FHS dugout collapse. It has been repaired, a few electrical issues at FHF that need to be repaired along with some lighting issues. Long Joe, we need to do an emergency tank replacement due to a small leak. South Street early learning sign has been updated and the new school name and the old sign has been removed. Crocker Elementary has a roof leak that turned from a minor leak to a larger leak. We have quoted it and put a requisition into purchasing for approval to fully repair the roof versus patching it. Mr. Roach told us door locking devices for multiple schools for a deadbolt device feature. We had a zoning meeting to put, the secondary locking mechanism was denied by the zoning committee, two to one, is a violation to deadbolt the locks. Pittsburgh High and Memorial both have a teacher locker mechanism currently. Mr. Roach presented at the safety task force meeting about the upgrade for surveillance system district-wide, a primary comprehensive camera surveillance, 211 cameras, 211 cameras and door access with identification card readers, then a secondary that includes sensors at all eight school sites. This would give an alert to the appropriate people, police, administration, et cetera, that a door may have been opened and should not be. Diagrams of the system presented by Mr. Roach. Mr. Walsh, are there any plans to reappoint the bricks at Goodrich? We did look with the new OPM and they took note and coming back with feedback. Joe Richardson, the issue is not just reappointing the building, it's a much bigger project. The OPM will be able to go into more detail in what is needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any other, any questions? Seeing none, Chair of the Policy Committee is going to be a bit late, so we'll move on to, well, actually, the Chair of the Student Support Subcommittee is going to be a little late as well. So, School Personnel Committee, I have nothing at this time. Executive Committee, nothing. Student reps. Ms. Young and Ms. Torado.
Good afternoon, fellow school committee members. It is so great to be in the presence of you all again today. It's been almost a month since we've last been with you and numerous events have taken place in March at each school. These events have been beneficial and uplifting for all students and staff within the district, so we'd like to take some time to reflect on them tonight.
Firstly, students at Pittsburgh High participated in our traditional basketball and dodgeball class games, allowing all students to interact and enjoy competitive yet super fun events resulting in all students to grow closer and relish in good times together.
FHS students also had the opportunity to experience their last pep rally of the year, put on to support the sophomores on their MCAS testing. The pep rally was hosted on Monday, March 27th, and consisted of students and staff participating in numerous games and activities such as tug-of-war, finish-the-lyric, a dance battle, and Hungry Hungry Hippo. Each class, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors participated in a class banner contest as well, in which each class had to paint and demonstrate a wall with any theme that represented their class. After seniors showing off with senior citizens, juniors with Disney Junior, sophomores with Toy Story, and freshmen with Rugrats, juniors took it home for their class and won.
Moreover, students not taking MCAS were able to have a delayed start into school, allowing students to come in around 10:30 instead of the usual 7:30. This was super successful in the fact that sophomores were able to have a very helpful and quiet environment for testing and teachers were also able to focus heavily on the students' testing rather than dealing with the stresses of teachers as well. This past month, Asian American Club at FHS had a big turnout with their fundraising event. They had presented a family movie night showcasing The Karate Kid as a showing for all students, staff members, and families to enjoy.
Along with this, spring sports also started for all student athletes taking part in track and field, lacrosse, baseball, softball, et cetera. Each team has started practicing and is now entering game time mode. Good luck to all students participating. Next, our middle and elementary schools have had a super successful month as well.
At Memorial and Long Joe Middle Schools, eighth-grade students planned and attended a semi-formal to help support them in funding their trip to Washington, D.C., which was very successful. Memorial is also starting up a National Junior Honor Society, a program set to celebrate younger students who excel within their classes.
On top of that, sixth-grade students from Memorial and Long Joe had the opportunity to attend the Broadway musical Hades Town with the drama students from Pittsburgh High on March 28th. This was a great opportunity for students to connect with those older than them while also enjoying a great Tony Award-winning musical. Side note, don't forget to come and watch the Pittsburgh High School Drama Club put on Beauty and the Beast the Musical, April 13th, 14th, and the 15th. The Drama Club worked really hard on this, so you won't want to miss it.
Our youngest students at South Street Park took in wearing green for St. Patrick's Day, where all students were, wore the celebrated colors and had a really cheerful day. They also had a family math activity night and a leprechaun traps activity night for families to come out and enjoy fun arts and crafts.
Lastly, in celebration of World Language Week, McKay, Crocker, and Rangel students were fortunate enough to have world language students from our high school read to them in both French and Spanish. It was so successful, Rangel invited them back later in the month to read to the students again. The world language department ended the week-long celebration hosting a spelling bee for our world language students to show off their skills. Given that March can be a long and draining month for all, the school district still works super hard in making sure that all students had a fun and successful time despite the struggles. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Nice job, thanks.
Thank you.
Approve the minutes from the previous school committee meeting.
Approve the minutes.
Motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous, thank you. Communications, do we have anybody?
I would just like to make one.
Yes, go ahead.
Parents of seniors at Pittsburgh High School, I just want to remind you that the Pittsburgh High School Alumni Association, the deadline is coming up very soon. And, Mr. Lemey, what do we have, a couple of weeks left?
Yeah, well, we're at a soft deadline this week, but.
Soft deadline this week. And last week, our meeting, we had about 40 seniors apply for assistance, and we usually have 75 or 80, so seniors and parents out there, get after your student to get that work in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Ms. Stevens. Any questions? Seeing none, public comment, period?
Jacqueline Wenshi, Pittsburgh resident, speaking on Agenda Item Number Three, Policy Committee. This and all your subcommittees should allow public comment. Few people come to these meetings, so this wouldn't take a lot of time. Any time constraints that exist happen because the Chair hasn't held meetings for months at a time. That is not a reason to exclude the public from participation in our government. The Policy Committee considers some very important matters. For instance, at their last meeting, Chair Horgan wanted to allow boys and girls bathrooms and locker rooms, but Ms. Reynolds and Mr. Hughes blocked him. Everyone should be aware of Horgan's woke, gone-wild agenda and should be able to comment on it. There are alternatives to allowing biological males in girls' restrooms and locker rooms. Each school should have an all-gender restroom. If there isn't one, then children wishing to use the restroom of another gender should be allowed to use the teacher's restroom instead. After all, teachers are adults and can handle this gender diversity in their restroom, whereas many girls may feel frightened. Certainly, we shouldn't be placing undue burdens on children, which the adults and the schools are unwilling to shoulder themselves. It's time for the adults to step up and resolve this issue. Mr. Mayor and Chair of the School Committee, why don't you lead by example and open up the second and third floor bathrooms in City Hall to people you might not feel comfortable with? It's supposed to be a City Hall for all. Mr. Dean Atali, tear down those bathroom locks.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I just want to comment on the last agenda that was also spoken about. Stoughton, Dedham, and Ashburnham.
Can you please state your name and address?
Jessica Jacobson. I just, Stoughton, Dedham, and Ashburnham and Lemonster all have adopted the policies to not allow political items that have been mentioned in a lot of the emails that I have sent out in their schools, put on by teachers. And then, I also want to mention, as Hal Shirtlove has been mentioned many times in this room in the last couple months, he has offered to give the Pittsburgh school system pocket constitutions, if you guys would like them to do constitution classes with the students, their little, the size little constitution books, if you guys would like. You all have my email, you can reach out to me for that, and I can set you up with him. And I just would like to say, I hope you all read the emails. I don't need to elaborate on the emails. I hope those are taken into consideration when you do have that meeting, when we all leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to make public comment? Yes.
My first public comment, I was on the school committee for 14 years, so my son graduated a couple of years before you guys are going to graduate. I wanted to say, I don't think I have ever seen a group of student representatives do a comprehensive report about the other schools the way you have, along with a PowerPoint. That was like, I have to applaud, I mean, really. That was, that was above and beyond, and it was so interesting for me because I didn't know about some of those events. And it just shows the richness, diversity, and caring that occurs in Pittsburgh Public Schools, so thank you for that. A really quick public comment, on Wednesday night, Superintendent Jokolo with Vice Chairman Pete Stevens will be part of the Civic Ambassador stewards workshop, which takes place at Main Street Studios, 6:30 PM, Wednesday, April 5th, that is 675 Main Street. And this is part of a four-week series on encouraging people to serve on boards and commissions and to be engaged publicly. I spoke to the Civus class at Memorial last Friday. We talked at length about the roads and we talked a lot about city finance. It was great to have a very easy budget to put up there and to show them what we spend on roads, what we spend on bridges and so forth. So, this is really exciting stuff that's happening here in Pittsburgh, and we hope that folks will be able to come. It's a, you know, it's a very informative environment. I want to thank the superintendent and Mr. Stevens in advance for making time for us, and I'll be back. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Horgan.
Hi. My tardiness.
That's okay. Did you have something to report, I think you did, on your Subcommittee, Policy Subcommittee?
Yes, we met, we met this last week.
Okay.
I can't say it was a productive meeting, but it was a good, lively discussion. There was a few interruptions, but that was so fast. I think there's one policy for approval tonight, the attendance policy for Pittsburgh High School. We can go over that before we vote for its approval. But I don't know if we're just going through the first reading, but we can talk about it when we get to it.
Okay. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, tonight, to kick off our report, we have Sally Cragan, I'd actually like to welcome her back to the podium, and we have the dog, the annual dog license poster contest. And this year, we had a record number of aspiring artists submit a proposed drawing. So, joining Ms. Cragan tonight is Chief Martino, so take it away.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, this, we started in 2018, I believe, or, no, 2017. There was a year off for COVID, but the number of entries has only climbed. And the purpose of the dog license awareness poster is that, so that residents can be aware that it is time to renew their license. The official deadline, I'm afraid, was March 31st, but there's a grace period this month. Next year, we're going to do this contest in January, so that'll, that'll time it up better. But there were so many entries and we, the Clerk's Department, Clerk's Office, and myself and some other folks, we got the 700-plus down to a more manageable 50. And I've asked the chief to come up and just talk about the importance of licensing your dog.
Thank you. Good evening. So, this has been my privilege to look at these posters for the last four years now and rate the posters on what I thought were the best ones. It was a fabulous idea that was, came through Ms. Cragan a few years back about the importance about licensing dogs. Animal control falls under my purview in the city of Pittsburgh, and I work very closely with our animal control officer. So, we thought it was very important to spread this message, especially with our youth, on the importance behind it, and what better way to do it than through art? And like, like Sally said, we started off with 200 or 300 pitches originally, and this year was 700. And I asked her if she could whittle it down a little bit, so I could do it within a half a day reviewing some of these. And this year, I had the pleasure of looking at 50-plus posters, all which were exceptional posters, by the way, and it was hard to pick winners, but, you know, I think this is great that I had the opportunity to work with you collectively on this and really spread the message about, you know, licensing our pets and just proper pet care and responsibility that comes with being a pet owner. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and I'm going to ask you, if you would, we have, we have our, a bunch of winners, which is really exciting. I love it when this legislative building can be filled with kids. So, I would like to bring Angel Garcia up. He is our honorable mention winner. Do you want to come up and just, you can show your picture? Yeah?
Nice. Nice job.
Yeah. Nice. Nice job. (applause) Okay, well, we're going to save Kil Mary hopefully for tomorrow. We do a second show of this wonderful production at City Council tomorrow, so that's when these artists will get their trophies. Chief, would you like to do the next honorable mention?
Orhan West.
My, my name is George, and I'm in fourth grade, and I go to Crocker School. This is my poster.
That's beautiful. Nice job.
God bless you.
Our next winner of an honorable mention award is Janaya Guzman, and Janaya is behind me, wait. Come on.
Nice.
Very nice.
Flaring leggings.
No. Congratulations. Where's Janaya go to school? Where did she go to school?
Where does she go to school? Crocker.
Okay, and from McKay, the after-school program did our, did this. We have Tiago Huertas Race. So, if I could invite Tiago up?
Oh, that's terrific. Yeah.
So, we've got two more awards to do, and then we'll invite our children up with their artwork to do a picture, which I think will be wonderful to share. This is the winning poster. And I'd like to bring Ren up. She is a fourth grader at Crocker School. Chief, could you talk a little bit about what, what, you know, what was the winning, the formula?
What really caught my eye on this was the amount of animals, but more importantly, you're showing different colors and variations of the animals, and I think that's reflective on our diversity here in the city, which is something that we all value. So, what I saw in this picture was a diversity as related to animals, and it really jumped off the page when I had them all spread out, so congratulations, outstanding piece of work.
Okay, our, we haven't done this before, but we're going to do it now. Teacher, our teacher Kelly Morrison at Crocker School took this project and said, "We can do this," and they did it. The entire Crocker School did the posters and entered, so we have a goodie bag for Mrs. Morrison. Want to come up? Say a couple of words about making this happen in the schools?
Well, this was just a lot of fun. The kids took part in it last year, and we love animals at Crocker, don't we? Yeah. And they all asked, "Can we do that contest?" So, we break it down into a couple of weeks. We learn, we talk about why it's so important to get your license, your pet license, and then the kids sit for a week and we start drawing and then coloring. It's just a good time. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
And now we'd like to do a picture, so if we can have the superintendent and the chief. Absolutely. The winning poster is here. We need all of our artists, so come on up and teach her and bring your art.
That's great. They did a great job.
Yeah. Yeah.
I did. I like the one, I like the one that Doggy's got his claws hanging out of the top.
I love this Crocker dude. It's never been every. Thank you for helping us with Crocker.
I want to make it. It's really live, too, you know? Animated. I'm happy that one of them will present to McKay, but. Yeah. Nope. What do we got? Musical. Hey, so.
There's Jen.
Thank you, thank you.
Great job, guys, well done.
Thank you. Thank you.
He was like, "God bless." I was like, "Oh, they're parents raised you, right, babe?"
So, there's DC traffic.
Oh, is it gone all week? Went to all that.
Yeah, yeah, let's continue. So, the theme of art and music continues tonight, and next up, we have Tabitha Greenlees, ready to talk about the high school musical for the spring, Beauty and the Beast.
Yes, hello, I'm Tabitha. This is our 10th annual spring musical. After a very long hiatus, for any of you who've been here long enough to know, 10 years ago, we brought back a high school musical. There had been some junior musicals that were primarily gauged for the middle school students, but it had been over 20 years since the high school had its own musical, so we're thrilled that we're doing Beauty and the Beast. I have a very, very short preview for you this evening. We have Sandra McGann and Alex Leach, who are going to be performing a very short section of Gaston. Come on over. On, we are only, we are very limited in terms of how much we are allowed to share in public based on all of our contract things, so it's just a taste, just enough to get you to come. So, tickets are available in advance, they are $10. You can purchase them online at fhsbeautyandthebeast.bpt.me, and all of that information is also linked in our Facebook event that you can find on the internet. So, easy-peasy, lemon-squeezy, we want to have lots and lots of people present. There will be members of this committee who are making some cameo appearances, so we'll be very delighted to see each and every single one of you in the audience. There are four shows, you can come Thursday night, April 13th, at 7:00. it would be, it would not be fair for me to say who might be present at which one so that you don't know and you have to maybe come to all four.
Okay.
Right? Yeah.
You not only teach music and art, you teach advertising, huh?
Sure. I am a, I am a one-woman-do-sit-all. I'm very, I will need to borrow the incredible Judy Greenleys over here, who's our fabulous accompanist and rehearsal pianist, who's going to play. Is it?
I am.
Okay. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't, where, where, where's a good place for the cameras to catch them? Because they're going to do a little bit of.
Right in front. Right in front of the air.
Yeah, like kind of where they are? Okay.
That's right. Oh, she's playing the music. Yeah. I see, I see.
Want to borrow mine?
Oh, that's why the keyboard, I was wondering why the keyboard was over there. Yeah. They weren't going to ask you to play. No. Okay.
Maybe next year.
Yeah. Okay.
No one fights like that song. Does his life like that song. In a wrestling match, nobody fights like that song. 'Twas no one as brawny or brawdy. As you see, I have my steps to spare. Not a bit of him, scraggy or scrawny. That's right. And every last inch of me is covered with hair. Fights like that song. Matches wits like that song. In a straight match, nobody spits like that song. I was virtually good on his front door. Tell you. Tell him so he doesn't.
Wow. Hey.
Come back again.
Let's see you at the show.
Well done. Thank you. Great.
Thank you, that was excellent. Looking forward to the show. Remember April 13th, 14th, and 15th, correct? And can you just share the website one more time? FHS.
FHSBeautyAndTheBeast.bpt.me.
M, Ren.
M from others. M, me.
Can we write out Beauty and the Beast or we just say B and B?
No, I think it's FHS. Yes.
Beauty and the Beast. And get it right out everything. Beauty and the Beast.
Okay. Next up, we have Ms. Jen Fisher to give an update on the arts offerings that the district has offered recently and has upcoming.
Good evening, everyone. How we doing tonight? Mr. Jokela had approached me last January, maybe, about taking our students to go see Hatties Town. And one of the things I love about Hatties Town, it really fit in with our 6th grade curriculum to, we were Percy Jackson's, so I work with the 6th grade teachers to put something together to have them kind of prep the 6th graders, because they're still a little young. But I was really nervous about pulling this all together because it was a night trip and I wasn't sure if all the kids were going to be able to go because it was going to be a late night. So we decided to contact the high school folks and include them to bring the drama program and the band program. Sandra came, one of the singers here tonight, she came on the show. She had such a great time at the show, just the energy alone. We had, at Fitchburg High, we had 27 students attend with three parents. At Long Show, 27 students came with 20 parents. Memorial had 55 students and 21 parents. And I was especially proud that we had 21 staff chaperones from the district that helped, helped us come. A few of the parents reached out and let us know that there was some sickness and some kids couldn't make it, but it was the first time we've done a big event, a night event, and I was really nervous about it. And I want to thank the cabinet for really supporting us on this because it was, it was a reach for me to do this trip. So now it's kind of opened up to other things as well. We're looking at maybe potentially doing a 5th grade trip to kind of get all the kids together to do something before they head up to middle school. The teachers have been very busy planning all sorts of field trips to the Ecotarium, to, there's another place, Holy Cross has a baseball game that they do for the kids. So there's a lot of different field trips and other kind of enrichment activities going out for the students. So we're, we're working at making sure all those are funded so that all the students can participate. Funding from the parents shouldn't be a reason for these children not to go. So I'm really excited with the support from Bob and our cabinet to make this happen for our kids. So more stuff is coming. Bob told me just keep coming up with all these crazy ideas and keep sending, "Can we approve this?" And it's been really great, so lots of stuff on the horizon coming down the road. Thank you.
Can you repeat where, where did they go again?
We went to see Hatties Town at the Hanover Theater in Worcester. It, it's won a ton of awards. 6th grade boys were sitting up engaged the whole time. I, I had a mom and dad sitting in front of me with their children and I thought, "Oh my God, this kid was so into it." It's a really great musical of anyone, I don't think it's done now, but if you ever get the chance to see, anything at the Hanover's been great anyway, it's a great theater. So we're looking at for next year, there's some stuff that's coming up potentially that might tie in with our curriculum. It's just always good to support that with the enrichment piece. It's better than a movie. Not as good as the book, but better than a movie.
Great turnout.
Yeah, I was, really, truly. It was a late night, I didn't get home till 12:30, so, but it was worth it.
I'll just say, you know, Ms. Fisher, I want to thank you for really your leadership on putting this together. There were a lot of logistics that we haven't encountered before. And you made it all work. And again, members of cabinet who were there making sure that everybody gets a ticket, you know, in the lobby to make sure everybody found their seat and really just start looking forward to next year because with the Student Opportunity Act, it's not just about academics, it's about experiences. So this is just one of many that we'll be offering for our students. So thank you.
So hopefully we get some more stuff up and running. The teachers have been so supportive, too, and really great about making sure this happens. You need that balance of academics and the enrichment piece, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just one quick, I just, on, how's the Washington trip going?
We're getting there. We're meeting with the, the trip coordinators from each school just to tidy up the numbers because the payment was due on Friday, the final payment. So the next step would be meeting with the kids to figure out who they're going to room with, which is always a challenge, because who you're friends with in September, you're not usually friends with in, you know, April and May. So we're rounding up, we're looking at the numbers and getting that final countdown and looking at the cost of the bus and that really, covering that cost of the bus really brought the trip down for a lot of families. So I know I do want to talk to some folks about maybe setting up some sort of fundraiser so we can have an account going just so we can do scholarships.
Jen, what's the, what's the amount per, per student?
It's, right now, it's 670, I believe.
Each, each student?
But it would have been close to 800 if we didn't have that support from the school committee.
Really?
When I first started the trip after Mr. Stevens left BF Brown, it was $125 a cure.
I was going to say, that's what I, yeah.
We started $125.
Wow.
Four days, Washington.
Yeah. But everything's included, all their food, the transportation.
Right, food, okay.
You know, gratuities, their rooms. We're not in the rooms that long, but yeah, I'm trying to hand the trip over to Mr. Walker at Memorial to kind of pick up the mantle so he can run the trip for the district. Trying to train him.
Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hey, next up on the agenda, we have the first pass at the school calendar for next school year. There is no vote tonight. This is just to share with you, the school committee, to get any feedback that you may have. We have already consulted with the, the FEA, received their input and comments. So from an internal perspective, this is ready to be shared with you. And I know, Mr. Thompson, if you have any.
Yeah, thank you Superintendent Jokela, absolutely. So you probably noticed when you received your packets for this week, we do have a change in our starting date. Typically, we do start before Labor Day holiday. This year, we will not be starting before Labor Day, we'll be starting after Labor Day. So the first day of school for all students, grades 1 to 12, will be Tuesday, September 5th. Also, there'll be three days of orientation on the 5th, 6th, and 7th for pre-K and K. And then the first day of school for pre-K and K will be on Friday, September 8th. What we decided to do is look at the professional development days that we usually typically have throughout the school year. We know that a lot of families have a hard time finding childcare during the school year, so we thought it would be smart of us to, or wise of us to move those four days before the start of school so there won't be any interruptions for families in trying to find daycare for those days. So we'll have four professional development days on August 29th, 30th, 31st, and September 1st before school starts. So that's the major change. Everything else is pretty much the same from previous years. And if you actually go down to the bottom, last day of school will be on June 14th. And then we also have Goodrich graduation scheduled for May 30th and Fitchburg High graduation on the 31st of May.
Thank you. Okay. No other questions or comments? I'd like to move on to the school safety update.
I just wanted to ask something. I recall in the past we spent quite a bit of time about snow days and things like that. Is that concept dropped, not needed, or wasn't successful?
No, snow days are still, I guess, full force and effect. This year, we had six snow days, unlike the years when there was COVID, there were remote learning days. The Department of Ed in Massachusetts has not gone back to allowing that. So if there is school canceled because of snow, districts have to make it up. So this year, we're going to June, or June 23rd. Friday, which is Friday. So.
So it will be June 23rd, not June 14th?
No, this, this school year. This is, this is for next year. This is next year, yeah.
And we don't know yet.
Yeah. Yeah. But if, feel free to advocate to Jeff Riley, Commissioner of Education, if you're interested in allowing remote learning days, so.
Right. So thank you Superintendent Jokela, and I know Chief Martino is here as well. I'll give a, as brief as possible, update of a number of the security and safety initiatives that the school system is undertaking, many of these in conjunction with Fitchburg Police Department and other organizations within the city, such as Fitchburg Fire. So there has been a very active task force meeting throughout the year, the Fitchburg Public Schools Safety Task Force. It's comprised of staff members from just about all schools, parents, we've had students participate, certainly community members, and absolutely members of our police and fire department. So the goal has really been to share ideas about ways that we can ensure that our students and faculty and any visitors to our building feel safe, both physically but in all aspects of that word, really. So that's emotional and in every other way. So we've been, we've been working together and focusing on promoting the culture of safety, where everybody has a significant role in the safety of, of everybody in our buildings, that we will continue to train and practice different strategies that ensure that, that we will focus on and look at opportunities for increasing our security and surveillance. You heard a little bit about some opportunities that we've been pursuing to secure doors, particularly at Long Show Middle School, improving communication and incident management, so that's during drills or even during or after incidents, and then staffing to address those types of things, so. And Chief, jump in wherever you would like to as well. There's a number of really detailed aspects that, you know, we can, we'll present this and share this, and many, many of these slides have been shared with, with all parents, students, and faculty members as well through our email distribution. But all schools are required to conduct two ALICE drills. ALICE is an acronym for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, Evacuate. And essentially what that is, is a strategy to address an incident in the moment. It's not, it's not chronological, it's not sequential necessarily, it's what's necessary at that time and what's best at that time. So we do those types of trainings with all students and faculty in the beginning of the year. We do drills in the fall. We have a second drill coming up at every school in the spring. We have worked very closely with Fitchburg PD to pursue several grants. We, we submitted the Safer Schools Grant for $150,000. That was actually presented through school committee that would help us replace locking mechanisms at Ryangold, South Street, and Long Show. And now we're pursuing a very significant grant for up to $500,000. The COPS Grant, as I said, Fitchburg PD, you know, has been unbelievable in supporting us with, with the type of grant, grant application that will hopefully, you know, make an impact and, and be secured. We're looking to, to implement in visitor management systems in all schools. We're actually ready to pilot one at Ryangold this week, but that would be for the fall in all schools. The CPR and emergency medical training that's being offered to all staff, rally points, reunification areas have been clarified by school. Wallace Civic Center has actually offered to be the reunification area for all schools in the event that we did have to move all of our students to a location that is large enough to house up to 1,500, 1,600 individuals with restrooms and those types of things. We had a very detailed active shooter training for 20-plus staff members last week. We have a surveillance system bid that's ready to go out through our chief, through our city procurement office. And then we've been conducting spot checks for doors at all buildings on a monthly basis with our school building maintenance team. We've added staff, we have resource officers at the middle schools and high schools that also support the elementary and, and Goodrich Academy. As I said, we've been doing a lot of training throughout, but we've increased security monitors at the middle school and high school as well. And that, I think that makes a significant difference. Communication improvements have continued. The Stop It app is available and it's used frequently. It's an anonymous reporting tool that students, faculty, or families can use. It allows for notification to administrators at each building, central office administrators, sometimes follow it up with a phone call depending upon the severity. And then we also have our Student Information System app, which provides real-time information. So to give an example of some of the types of things that we're looking to do at, say, Long Show, Ryangold, this is a type of lock that is called a mortise lock, provides a deadbolt right on, right within the handle. The handle is lever. We did try to, to produce some secondary locks that did not meet the criteria for building egress, so, so we're pursuing this through some of the grants that I, that we pursued with the PD. The beauty of this is it's ultra-simple. No one needs to step into the hall to secure the lock. They can keep the door locked with a thumb, engage the, the actual deadbolt. And as we know about many of these incidents in organizations, an active shooter does not enter into a locked room. Just doesn't happen. They move on. So this is the type of thing that we, that our students and faculty deserve, and that's why we're pursuing it. We have two great nurses at South Street that have offered up training for CPR, AEDs, and also some emergency medical training. It's open to all of our staff, they've been, they've been full. I plan to go on April 12th, I think Superintendent Jokela and Mr. Thompson on the 17th of May. It's just a great way to provide us with that kind of information that's not only useful in the school, but out on the street. You know, you could help someone who might need. Wallace Civic Center has actually offered to be the reunification area for all schools in the event that we did have to move all of our students to a location that is large enough to house up to 1,500, 1,600 individuals with restrooms and those types of things. We had a very detailed active shooter training for 20-plus staff members last week. We have a surveillance system bid that's ready to go out through our chief, through our city procurement office. And then we've been conducting spot checks for doors at all buildings on a monthly basis with our school building maintenance team. We've added staff. We have resource officers at the middle schools and high schools that also support the elementary and Goodrich Academy. As I said, we've been doing a lot of training throughout, but we've increased security monitors at the middle school and high school as well. And I think that makes a significant difference. Communication improvements have continued. The Stop It app is available and it's used frequently. It's an anonymous reporting tool that students, faculty, or families can use. It allows for a notification to administrators at each building, central office administrators, sometimes follow it up with a phone call depending upon the severity. And then we also have our student information system app, which provides real-time information. So to give an example of some of the types of things that we're looking to do at, say, Long Show, Ryangold, this is a type of lock that is called a mortise lock, provides a deadbolt right on, right within the handle. The handle is lever. We did try to, to produce some secondary locks that did not meet the criteria for building egress, so. So we're pursuing this through some of the grants that I, that we pursued with the PD. The beauty of this is it's ultra-simple. No one needs to step into the hall to secure the lock. They can keep the door locked with a thumb, engage the, the actual deadbolt. And as we know about many of these incidents in organizations, an active shooter does not enter into a locked room. Just doesn't happen. They move on. So this is the type of thing that our students and faculty deserve, and that's why we're pursuing it. We have two great nurses at South Street that have offered up training for CPR, AEDs, and also some emergency medical training. It's open to all of our staff. They've been, they've been full. I'm planning to go on April 12th, I think Superintendent Jokla and Mr. Thompson, on the 17th of May. It's just a great way to provide us with that kind of information that's not only useful in the school but out on the street. You know, you could help someone who might need CPR training, who might need some help if they have a significant wound or something like that. We had, again, a very detailed active shooter training with 20 teachers from around the district, district last Wednesday by proactive response team. They did an excellent job. We were lucky to have our school resource officers and Lieutenant Howe from Fitchburg Police Department there as well. As I said about a visitor management system, what that means is a visitor enters into a building, they produce their ID. The ID is captured, it's checked, background checked for the, for the child sex offender databases. It produces a sticker ID with their picture right there. There's a data record, and you can see an example, Nate Walker, actually Gold F., General Excellence graduate of Fitchburg High, who now works for the district, is helping us get this updated and up, up off the ground. So you can see a couple of examples of what happens when someone logs in. The school has a record of every person who is, who is visiting the site at that time, when they entered. There's access to, to, you know, you can end their visit, you can send them reminders, hey, your visit's about to end in 10 minutes, you should check back in, that type of thing. So it's a great way for us to just increase that kind of security around our buildings. And then we have a significant upgrade in surveillance system that we're prepared to do at all schools. This would include cameras, it would include door sensors, alarms, identification card access points at all sites. It really would be a significant investment in our safety and security for our students, faculty, families, visitors, really for the next 20 years. And it would be fully integrated with the Fitchburg Police Department system. So in the event of a serious incident, they're able to flip a switch, get on the camera, see what's going on in live, real-time, and communicate with officers on the ground. And, you know, I have to say that, of course, we, we saw what happened in Nashville last week, and I hearts go out to those folks down there, but we did have a chance to observe the, the body camera footage, and that those amazing individuals there really did the type of work that, that had to be done in that time, and they did it as quickly and efficiently as possible, and to neutralize that situation. And, and again, that type of communication is critical to those individuals who are on the feet, who are on the ground like that. This gives an example of what this type of system looks like. You can see the different card readers, door sensors, cameras would be red, blue, and purple. So that's Goodrich, a small building. It's our smallest building square footage-wise, and, and, but each building would look like that. So next, next safety task force meeting, this will be our fifth meeting of the year. Open to all community members. We do do dinner at those meetings, but we also allow for and encourage in-person, virtual attendance, I should say. We do translation for all of our materials. We always have a translator at our meetings as well. We do English, Spanish, and Portuguese. And if you have any questions, please reach out to me, but would love to have you at the next meeting. Site to be determined. We did Ryangold last time. We might, we might take it on the road to another, another school for the next one, so. Chief, would you want to jump in at this time?
Sure. First of all, you did a fabulous job explaining how far we've come in such a short time. The work that Mr. Roach has done and the team has done on the safety and security initiative is second to none. We are looking for best options, we're looking for the best practices. I think we've done a fabulous job on creating a better infrastructure for our Fitchburg Public Schools, something that I continue to advocate with the Superintendent, Mr. Roach. I think our best tool is our early warning system. Our best tool is our students and our teachers, the people that call the public schools home to get that information to us before it becomes a problem. I think early warning systems are probably the number-one tool that we can provide. The Stop It app is one of those tools, having, having our students and our teachers and our staff have the ability to alert someone of something they may have heard in the bathroom, something they may have heard in the gym, or something they may have heard just passing in the hallway. Those early warning systems are extremely, extremely important. You know, after Nashville, the first thing I did, I, I got the first release of the body camera footage from the DOJ as they sent it out to police chiefs across the nation. First people I shared it with were Mr. Roach and Mr. Jokla. I wanted them to see firsthand what people in my profession saw firsthand responding to this call. And I think we've all seen those videos at this point. You know, I had to ask myself, could they have done anything different in Nashville? And quite frankly, I was having a hard time coming up with it. Could they have done something different? The teachers, you saw the first respond to having communication with the teacher as soon as they got out of their vehicle. You looked at video of the kids in the playground where they were dispersing in an orderly fashion that they practiced on. It, it looks like they did everything possible down there. Let's face it, folks, there's evil in this world, and we have to confront evil. Simple as that. My job as police chief is to provide the most safe and secure environment for our teachers and our children and our staff at all of our public schools. And I can't, I can't say enough about how far we've come in the last two years, looking for best practices, creating better infrastructure, and just finding a way that we can exist in our public schools and feel safe and not have to have that worrisome that, what's going to happen next. I think we've come a long way, and I'm very proud of the relationship that my department has formed with the Fitchburg Public Schools. I can't say enough about our school resource officers, what they do each and every day in our district. They're all taking on extra roles. My SRO at Memorial is out at the elementary schools, trying to expand relationships there. The work that they're doing each and every day is enormous, and it's a great value to our students and our entire city.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes. I, safety is number one, and I'm very pleased to hear all what you just said. I want to commend Mr. Roach and Chief Martino. I mean, this is, this is awesome, and I love it. And did I hear correctly that all this treatment that you mentioned there with the, the security devices and all the, the cameras is for all eight schools? Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, all eight schools, and appreciate the compliment, but I will say, this has been a team effort from start to finish. I mean, a lot of people involved with it, so. But yeah, all eight schools and at South Street, probably two areas that would be covered because it has two entrances.
And I understand that, you know, some of the, the, the resource officers, you know, are not at just one particular school, they go to two different schools. What is the name of the, the resource officer that is assigned to Goodrich Academy?
I, I have three school resource officers, one assigned to the high school, who is Officer Penetti. We have one assigned to Memorial, which is Officer Figueroa, and one at Long Show, Officer Hashi. Now, my two Memorial School SROs, they split up duties at our elementaries across the city. Officer Penetti, because just the sheer amount of the population at the high school, that's his primary spot. So my two SROs at the, at the middle schools share duties in our elementary schools, and they cover the closest to their district. The Memorial SRO goes to Ryangold, goes to South Street, and then the Long Show will go to McKay and Crocker.
So how would, and again, this is not blaming anyone, I'm just, how would the, the, the students at, or the, the entire faculty at Goodrich Academy, you know, have a resource officer in case something was to take place there? Who would be assigned to go there?
That would go to Officer Penetti from the high school, because you're dealing with the same age level, where it's a different skill set that Penetti, Officer Penetti would bring to the high school, dealing with, you know, people in the high school age level. So when we've had any issues at Goodrich, Officer Penetti has been my cover person there. But I can tell you, after doing my historical research in preparation for this evening, Goodrich sees the least amount of activity where it requires to have a police officer there, so.
That's true, you know, I'm, I'm doing my practicing there, and, you know, I, I, I hear a lot of comments, you know, there's some people are saying that that's the most safest school, so, so I can understand, you know, that, you know, it's not, that you don't have a full-time officer there. But just the other day, there was some, there was an incident there, and, you know, so we want to make sure that they are also covered, because our students deserve the best.
Absolutely. I don't, not one school over the other. The priority is the Fitchburg Public School system, not Goodrich, not McKay. It's an effort that we do across the district. You know, I, I had the opportunity, after the superintendent asked me to be here this evening, to do a little bit of research over the last several years on calls for service at our schools, criminal activity at our schools. You know, and, and looking at the data, I, we're, we're starting to make a transition out of the pandemic at this point. I'm starting to see historical data that are coming back to numbers that we saw pre-pandemic. So, which is very encouraging when you look at some of the data. You know, I was looking at the high school data, you know, our overall calls for service going back to the 2018 timeframe of what we were responding to up there. Our calls for criminal activity at the high school have gone back to the 2018 timeframe. So I'm seeing a switch moving back at the high school level. What I'm seeing in the, in the middle schools, I think that, that age group is still catching up from the pandemic. You know, quite frankly, that, that age range, they lost two years of their life because of the pandemic, and we're slowly catching up there. But the, the numbers that I ran and I was exploring in preparation, it, it's encouraging. Are we perfect? I will never sit here and say we're perfect. Am I full safe? Safety? We can never predict that. But I can tell you, the efforts that the police department, working with the school department each and every day, I go to bed easy at night, knowing that the people we have in our school systems are creating that safe environment, and that our teachers, our staff would do anything in the world, and the members of my police department would do anything in the world for our children. So it's very encouraging.
Thank you so much, once again, for what you do.
I think, Chief, Goodrich, because of their time, they're covered a lot by the road officer.
Yeah, yes. In addition to my SROs, I, during the daytime, I have anywhere from eight to 12 police officers working in patrol capacity. That immediate response can happen at, at that school at any time as well.
Ask Officer Penetti to be working from seven in the morning till nine at night, so.
It, it's funny, when these officers become school safety officers, school resource officers, they take on a new identity. And the transformation you see in my office, with offices when they become SROs, you know, we, we do our due diligence on picking who we want for SROs, number one. But once they make that transition, it's really fun to see, because now they're like the parents of 1,400 students. It's just, it becomes that possessive to our SROs, and why I'm such a strong advocate of a robust SRO program.
When you get somebody like Officer Penetti, again, who I had when I was at Fitchburg High School, he's a Fitchburg High School graduate, he's a Fitchburg guy, you know, he, they really put their, their heart and life into it.
We're all Red Raiders, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Well, I had some thoughts as you were, as you were speaking. The CPR that you're going to be offering to the staff, I might suggest that that be offered to the high school students as well, even maybe down eighth, ninth grade, you know, some.
Yeah, yeah, I can speak to that. You know, the, the folks that are doing it now, currently the nurses at South Street, they're doing an excellent job. And in talking to our nurse director, Pam Rivers, we are talking about expanding the type of training and, to the audience. So the type of training, meaning expanding even some of the emergency response capacity of an individual. It's often referred to as stop the bleed training. You know, some, you come across someone in a car accident who has a significant wound, that you'd know some strategies to try to help them stop bleeding or at least slow it down until EMTs arrived, or police, or fire, or something. In addition, that would be to interested students, especially those who are upperclassmen who could then apply for the CPR. It's not a license, but certificate.
But they, the students might feel, feel good about knowing some things, how to do, you know, how to do some things.
And it's great for them if they're interested in babysitting services, if they're interested in pursuing lifeguard, if they already have that CPR certificate. It's, it's a nice credential, so to speak.
Then, then I wondered if you have any capacity to shut down halls?
Halls, meaning like classroom?
All of the talk has been about classrooms. But if you know a shooter's over there, can you shut down all the other halls? Is there, you might consider somehow to limit the ability to run or get away or whatever.
Our primary focus, what we train in law enforcement and what we bring to the schools is, our primary focus is walking down those classrooms, because quite frankly, that's where the killing happens. When you have an active shooter situation, it's predominantly in the classrooms. If you look at, look back historically on some of the mass shootings, your focus needs to be on those classrooms. Your hallways, you need those accessible to first responders. So if you start locking down hallways and your first responders may get caught, it's not the best action to take at that point. So our focus has been on the classroom.
I know, but you might just consider some, somehow, the, the concept of, I, I see what you're saying.
Well, I would just interject.
I'm just passing out ideas.
You make a great point. And in the training, the L, lockdown, and you could even say the C, counter, is teachers, students, staff that are associated with a school are trained, do what's necessary. And one of the strongest strategies is to barricade an area. So if it happens to be the, the two doors, like fire doors in a hallway, and they grab these tables and chairs, and they fire them against that, that door, because that's the best thing to do and the safest way to keep people from harm, then that's what they would do, absolutely.
And then I wondered if you, if there are any alarms that are made that recognize gunfire sound?
There is. There's technology, there's gunshot detection technology. You're seeing some community, the city of Boston, your larger cities utilize gunshot detection technology throughout their entire city. The city of Worcester utilizes gunshot detection in a lot of areas in the city of Worcester. I believe it's Attleboro that just built the high school, and they installed gunshot detection in their school. So the technology is there.
Might be interesting to explore, you know. And you mentioned the Stop It app, and I think that you've, you've touted that as being very valuable previously when we discussed these things. This, this last shooting, you know, did the, did the shooter shoot out the glass doors, the entrance doors?
That, that's what was depicted on TV. The shooter arrived there and took out the glass doors with her weapon, yes.
Because we've kind of thought that the glass doors or the entrance ways had been, you know, bulked up or secured, or I don't know what.
That, that is an area that we continue to look at, our entrance ways. You know, you, you really, I mean, we can talk about fortifying our, our buildings to a point, but they still have to be inviting. The last thing you want is a child going to school and not feel safe when they walk in the front door. There is technology out there to, to fortify your entrances, and that, that's, we're constantly discussing that and looking at opportunities, we can bring this technology to our district. But I, I think it's worth repeating, because all the infrastructure in the world will not stop every act of mass violence. I am a strong proponent of early warning and create a culture within our school department where it's okay to say something. And, and that is education coming from our staff and our teachers, speaking to the students that it's okay. You're not snitching on someone, you're not, you're not, you know, sending someone to jail, but we've got to create that culture. Our best defense is the people that are in our buildings 24 hours a day or during the school business hours. They're our best, best defense about creating a safe environment, because they're the eyes and ears. And I said the Stop It app, because that's just one tool. But I think as we move forward, we've got to continue to really reiterate that and double down on creating that culture that it's okay to say something. And that comes with creating trust, something that, that I've taken very seriously, where there's a trust level with police officers in our student body, creating trust with our staff, to create that culture to say, it's okay to say something.
I think I read that this, this shooter had corresponded with a friend or some other person prior to, to actually carrying out the, the horror that followed. I wonder if you might study that language, probably the person that she, that was called was, didn't know what to do with what, what the other person was saying. But there's probably some common language that people that are at the state, they, they speak in a certain way, they say certain things that are, you know, should alert the listeners. So I just thought that might be included somehow in the education when you speak to the children, to the, whatever age.
Yeah, absolutely.
Am I making myself clear?
Yep.
Hundred percent.
We constantly emphasize that exact thing, creating those relationships and reiterating that it's okay to talk to someone. And you look at mass shootings across our country and you look at the one common denominator is, was there any early warning on that?
That's what I'm speaking of.
Was there any type of early warning?
So, that the children would feel good about saying something there because I think perhaps this person didn't know what to make of the language.
That's the type of culture we're trying to establish in our district. So, I can tell you it's important to me.
Thank you.
Real quick, just want to say thank you for being here. It was a really thorough conversation. I just wanted to note that there was a lot that we didn't mention. Through the years, we've, you know, talked about this a lot. We've gone over our policies and procedures, invested in grants, and there's so much, you know, the list is exhaustive. And one thing I just want to mention, I believe it was about three years ago where we did the SRO policy or updated it. And, you know, Chief Martinow got to talk to me and the policy committee about the excessive training that these SROs go through. They, and the entire police department goes through. So, I just really want to, you know, point that out. And also, I want the public to know that this isn't something that we just review after a tragedy in the country. This is something that we're always innovating. We're lucky to have a police chief that's always looking for better policies, for innovations of how we can improve. So, this is something that we're always talking about and always looking to improve. I just want everyone to know that. My other question was for the bid for the surveillance system. So, how much is that for? You said it was for all the schools. I guess I don't really care about how much it is. It's for all the schools for the surveillance system?
It is, yeah. And, yeah, it's certainly a significant upgrade. We won't know what the amount is on an invitation for bids like that. It would be based on very careful specifications of what we know we need.
Right.
There's been a lot of work. My predecessor Craig Shalfo did a lot of work, our IT department, the police department, the schools, in saying, this is what we need. We reviewed this at the last Safety Task Force meeting in March to go over with, actually, some folks who were here, who are here tonight, were there to give feedback. And there was a resolute response of, keep the door alarms, we want those. So, we won't know the cost, but the cost is, I look at it this way. Though it may be high, it pales in comparison into what the importance is around, you know, what the, everybody inside that building needs. And really looking forward to it. It's about time and it's a great time to do it.
Thank you. And this is a specific question, sorry to just follow up. And I don't know if either of you can answer this, but is there language in the request for proposal about, you know, the system being able to communicate with the police department? Do you guys have a feed of that or access to it?
That's the ultimate goal. Because having that, Mr. Reynolds brought up gunshot detection devices. The goal is to have an access feed to responding offices. Every one of my cruisers, our frontline cruisers are all equipped with mobile digital computers. So, you can imagine, in the God forsaken incident where we're responding to something, we can get a live feed before we even get there on one of our computers, which will dictate our response into that school. If it's through door 12 or door 18. That's the ultimate goal because that's the ultimate tool when it's needed the most is to have the eyes. And we saw it in Evolde, you saw the cameras, and that was a direct feed. And fortunately, Evolde didn't go the way that I would have liked to see it gone. But then we saw the cameras, well, the body camera footage in Nashville. And for this committee and the Pittsburgh Police Department is going to be body cameras on July 1 of this year. All of my police officers in the city of Pittsburgh are going to be equipped with body cameras and deploying them on the streets as of this July 1. So, starting in July, everything is recorded on our police officers. And you saw what that brought to the table in Nashville, having that footage right there. So, something I'm very proud of that we finally, through the support of council and the mayor's office, we are finally at that point where every police officer, including myself, will have a body camera on their person.
I think everybody should be proud of that.
Very proud of it.
Yeah, I think that's great. And I remember we had the Shooter Defense Systems presentation five years ago.
We did.
I don't know if you remember that. And they had a similar product. They had basically infrared sensors that would detect gunshots and be able to track where they are. And Chief asked a lot of smart questions about how exactly that would pan out and work. And, you know, the cost of it was pretty excessive. And I think, you know, my, I had a lot of thoughts, but, you know, a closed surveillance network would be a lot more effective and potentially, you know, less expensive than those kind of sensors. That was five years ago. I don't know if that's changed, but I'll give back the floor to the chairman. Thank you again.
I had a follow up question. I recall a conversation previously about how quickly helicopters can get to the place. And I think that we were relying on the state police with helicopters. I wondered if there's any coordination between our airport and helicopter availability and training?
I'm not even sure where to go with that one, to be honest with you. I do have access to the Mass State Police. They have a fleet of helicopters, I believe four or five, in case of an emergency. We don't train with helicopters, so I'm not sure how to respond to that.
Yeah, it's just a thought that I put out as a possible tool that we also could use.
When events like this happen, people are coming from every corner of the state to respond. I will rely heavily on mutual aid and assistance from anybody and everybody.
And for some reason, I also thought about availability of bulletproof vests.
For police officers?
Well, maybe there could be some at the schools. I don't know. I don't know. I just thought of that as a possibility.
It's mandated that all Pittsburgh police officers have them. And as always, my office is always open. If you have an individual question or you want to talk about something offline as it relates to security, I'm always available to answer any questions that the committee may have. We approach internal threats and external threats. And we continue to improve upon our response in whatever best fashion we can. And I will continue to work very closely with the superintendent and his team to make sure that our schools are the safest possible.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Just before you leave, just want to thank you for your collaboration, really, over the last couple of years, helping design the specifications for this system that Mr. Roach was talking about. Again, things take time to bring together projects, capital projects in municipalities, I think, as we all know. And really, there's been a lot of thought that has gone into it in terms of how the, this system will communicate with the police department, what access you will have and how quickly you can be there. So, again, thank you for all your support and collaboration of all the SROs and the whole FPD.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, tonight we have a budget update for next year's budget. I'll start just a little bit, just to lay some context, and then I'll transfer it over to Mr. Roach, our Director of Finance and Operations. So, this year is year three of the Six Year Student Opportunity Act. This is an act that was not only approved by the Massachusetts Legislature, but also funded through the budget process. So, we're really excited that this is continuing for Pittsburgh and about 24 other districts across the Commonwealth of Mass. As it stands right now, our budget, based on the governor's budget that was released a month or so ago, we're looking at about a $7.8 million increase in Chapter 70 funding over this year's levels. Between this year's budget and next year's budget, it's over $14 million of funding associated with the Student Opportunity Act. This year, we were able to hire about 50 new positions. We're in the process now of meeting with principals and reviewing what each school's needs are in terms of what the student needs are to help all our students grow and achieve. So, that process is ongoing. It's like opening day was last week with the Red Sox. So, I think now we're maybe in the third inning here and the ninth inning will be the last meeting in May. So, again, we're working with the school principals, leadership teams. We'll be giving an update to the FEA this week, which will probably be a mirror image of where we're at today, tonight, that we're presenting with you. And again, with the Student Opportunity Act, it also brings greater reporting responsibilities with the Commonwealth, with the Department of Ed. And as part of the Student Opportunity Act, we had to identify three evidence-based practices that we think will have the highest impact on student growth and achievement. And those three practices are supporting educators to implement high quality aligned curriculum, inclusion co-teaching for students with disabilities and English learners, and expanding capacity to address social emotional learning and mental health needs of students and families, which we have seen an increase over the last couple of years. Again, the presentations, we started meeting with the schools last week, we're continuing this week. We had some people from the high school leadership team here earlier. Again, we wanted to meet with the secondary level schools this week and go back with some follow up questions as we look at the needs. Here we go. So, we'll be reviewing those requests over the next few weeks. Also, looking at really, one of the issues that we have across the district is space. So, we're looking at how best to accommodate the needs and the additional staffing and the space that we have. Also, just for everybody's benefit or reminder is, you know, the Crocker Elementary School MSBA construction project will start over the summer. So, that's another factor that we'll be seeing if there's any impact in terms of school operations at that site. We did have a presentation last week to the Resource Subcommittee. Mr. Stevens gave an update of that. Our next school committee, Resource Subcommittee meeting is scheduled for April 25. And we'll include, again, recommendations for personnel, capital, and other resource requests. And with, really, with the first reading to occur on May 15, which would be the second school committee meeting of May. Just for, again, historical reference, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, I guess the blinking screen? Yeah, I guess we do.
End of meeting.
Yeah, end of meeting, right. So, you can see, again, over the last two years specifically, this year, which is fiscal year '23, and next year, which is fiscal year '24, the budget has increased from about $81 million to almost $97 million. And with the FY '22 being the first year, it's increased almost $19.7 million. So, with that, we've been able to hire, again, as I mentioned, just last year alone, over 50 staff to help them meet the needs of our students. We've hired extensively in the clinician and special education areas, although our challenge to find staffing in special education, paraprofessionals and other staff. And again, the other school districts are looking for the same people that we are. So, it's a very competitive market in terms of being consistent also that a lot of the school districts in the state have the same student needs as we do here in Pittsburgh. Yes, Mr. Roach, I'll just have you the foundation budget increase here.
Sure. So, as Superintendent Jokula mentioned, we're in Student Opportunity Act, year three of a six year rollout. The Student Opportunity Act came into effect because cities like Worcester and Brockton filed lawsuits saying we aren't funded like we should be. You know, as urban areas with many students who are moving in and have various needs, we need a better, we need a better foundation budget process. So, that went into effect in 2022 for that fiscal year. And this is now year three, again, of a six year rollout. You can see the increase and the impact that Student Opportunity Act has had on Pittsburgh. There are 12 categories of levels of funding support, with one being communities that have the least need to 12 being communities that have the greatest need. And Pittsburgh is a category 11 community. So, it has the greatest amount of needs. And as a result, we're seeing the greatest amount of investment in that type of funding. And funding doesn't cure all problems, but it certainly gives you the ability to address them in ways that maybe we hadn't been able to. So, I think you're going to continue to see in '25, '26, '27, before they finally establish the set foundation enrollment amounts that then just become the way it is after that, that we will continue to have increases like this, which is a good thing for the city. It's a great time to be here in terms of investment. So, our budget calendar continues. Again, we're in our school committee meeting tonight, but we'll continue to have meetings with the school sites. We will go into a detailed review at the next Resource Subcommittee meeting on the 25th and looking forward to that first reading of the FY '24 budget on May 15. Glad to take any questions. I'm going to unplug this because it's not working well. All right, I'll put it back up, sorry.
Mr. Roach, is it okay for?
Yes, go ahead.
It's coming right back up.
May I please see that slide one more time? The one that has the three areas that we need to present to the, for the Student Opportunity Act budget? You know, you talk about curriculum, English language. I just want to see, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
Very close to me.
And the principals and the directors are well aware of these particular evidence-based practice areas. That's what the EBP stands for. And I can say, we were in meetings all day on Friday and the principals did a great job of really aligning their requests for additional curriculum, personnel, whatever it might be, to those areas because they understand that we're getting these funds to particularly target the types of needs that our community, that our students have, that our staff have, and the classrooms to do the job, and the buildings have, and with kind of materials that they need to do the job, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep, no problem.
Any other comments, questions? All right, then, Mr. Roach, I want to just talk about the, I guess, the one grant tonight to accept and the donations that we have on the agenda for the school committee to accept.
So, in terms of grants to accept, we have Action Item 23-241, which is the Accelerating Literacy Learning with High Quality Instructional Materials for $154,266. And then we have a number of donations, starting with Action Item 23-242. Many of them are donations to the schools, including $100 for the Bright Program at Pittsburgh High, $1,045 for items at South Street, $15,000 from Digital Federal Credit Union for scholarships for Class of 2023 members, $3,000 from Limits to Credit Union for, again, scholarships for Class 2023, another $1,000 from Rollstone, same purpose, $1,000 from Enterprise, same purpose, $3,000 to support classroom materials from North End Subaru. And then we got a really interesting and cool grant donation, rather, from the National Football League, the $5,000 to start a female flag football program for our students at Pittsburgh High School.
Jeremy, will Guidance Councilors have that information so they can get it out to the seniors?
They do, yeah. Ms. Robison takes the lead on that, but all Guidance Councilors try to promote their graduates to apply for. They try to keep it simple with just the bank scholarships. So, they apply once and then they might qualify, say, for a $1,500 scholarship that Limits to Credit Union is attached to. But really, they try to keep it pretty straightforward.
What's the committee's wish? Do we want to bundle those action items or take up the policy?
We have one more item to discuss, policy.
Policy, that's right, right. Mr. Horgan, you want to speak on that?
Yeah, we should put the grants together and then we can tackle the policy separately.
And then go back to yours?
That makes sense.
Okay, all right.
Make a motion, we bundle the action items.
Motion made, seconded to bundle.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to accept the bundled action items.
23-241 up through and including?
Hold on. One of the grants or one of the items to be accepted from Subaru, I think it's from the.
Adopt a Classroom.
Adopt a Classroom.
Okay.
Which is not, I guess, hasn't been allowed under our donation, I guess, protocol over the last. the last few years, several years actually, dating back to the days of my predecessor.
You don't give it back. Do you?
No. We will have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, we'll have to get back to.
All right, so we're not.
If we can table, it'll be one for.
All right, 23.
The $3,000, so that would be.
Action items, 23-241, with the exception of 23-248. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous, thank you. Mr. Horgan, now we're back to a policy item 55112.
Correct. So, we're just going through the first reading tonight, and if there's any questions, we can go over them. Just want to narrow down what was actually amended from the previous policy. And just to point everyone's attention, it's on page four. It's the last paragraph of the policy that was essentially just added on top, and it is a, you know, state-advised regulation about consecutive absences. So, I don't know if anybody got a chance to go over that, I guess. So, Chair, if we want to go over the first reading, do we want to read the entire policy or just the amendment to it at the end?
I would, I have questions on the absences from school.
Sure.
To me, I've always been, students have a right to a free and appropriate education, and getting the education is more important than getting the grade or the credit. Getting the education is most important. In here, it says, "The student may be issued an excused absence form, which will indicate to the teacher that makeup work is allowed." So, if a student doesn't get the makeup form, then they're not going to get the makeup. This is the way I'm reading it. And a student has a right to that makeup so that they don't miss out on material that they might need for MCAS tests or so forth. Teacher does not have to give credit or even a grade, but the student is entitled to the information. And then, under suspensions, makeup work will be allowed at the student's initiative. However, the suspended student will not be granted credit for work missed during the suspension period. So, we're allowing a student to get the educational material under suspension, but we're not allowing a student to get the information who may have been sick but was unable to get the excused absence, and they're missing out. Yet, the suspended student is going to get the information.
Can you point out this sick policy that you're referring to? They're not going to get the materials? On page one?
Well, they're saying.
On page one, under absences from school.
Under absences from school. A student, for whatever reason, because of their home life and so forth, might not be able to get the absence note from the parent. So, they would not get the excused absence, and they would not be able to get the makeup work or the homework that they have missed, which is part of their education, which would be valuable to future tests.
I understand your concern there. That was not something that was up for discussion during our approval of this policy for the first reading. We were really just talking about the state regulation on the back. And I'm not sure if your understanding is correct, but I'm happy to, at the committee's wish, take that back to verify that and discuss with admin. Unless, Bob, if there's any comment of clarification now? Yeah, I guess I'm looking at former Pittsburgh High School Principal Roach here in terms of the, I guess, how often this excused absence form has been used in the past, understanding you may not be able to comment on it now.
Yeah, I would suggest probably reviewing a couple of these items, like Mr. Stevens said, for accuracy in terms of, you know, the recent approach to attendance. I can say that students have certainly been allowed to do work, because it's hard to know sometimes why they've been absent. They aren't always able to secure a note. We certainly want kids to come to school, and we want them to demonstrate their learning. You have to have attendance policies, and you have to be strict about those and have high expectations, but at the same time, I think it's probably good to look at the suspension paragraph, the first paragraph that Mr. Stevens noted, in addition to the legal parameters that are required, which is that last addendum under the NB. So, it's probably good to just take a quick look at a few of those to ensure that they are accurate.
Yeah. And I understand your concern, Pete, with this language that, to the teachers, that makeup work is allowed, which implies it wouldn't be allowed without it. So, I get that implication. I do think that assistant principals are, you know, using their discretion in these instances, but if we want to make that explicit in writing on the policy, I'm happy to do that.
I think the student should be able to get the work.
Agreed.
And whether they get credit or not.
Yeah.
I know when.
Just to be clear, we're not sure that that's the case, but we prefer it to be explicit in the policy. Yeah. Is that the committee's wish? Yep. We can take that back to the Subcommittee and bring it back for first reading. Happy to do that.
Yes.
Couple of things, and obviously, I didn't realize it was the only thing that you added was that last section, but is this a couple of typos that need to be corrected? On page two, under tardiness to school, second line, pick up a tardy slip in the main lobby, the period after main can be deleted.
Okay.
Yeah. Dismissal from school, page three. Same thing under the second line, nurse's office, there's a punctuation mark after nurses that can be deleted. And then I have a question on that same page three, under the top of the page, under tardiness to school, section A. It says, "If there is no note, the student will receive a session for every unexcused tardy after the first offense." And I read through this again. I'm not sure what they mean, "will receive a session." Do you know what that is, what that session is?
I mean, it was previously referred to as an after-school detention.
Session, detention, yeah.
Probably when this was written.
Okay. That was unclear to me. And also, on the last page, two things. Is it possible for us to add Section 18, Chapter 76, to the policy, so it's there? If somebody has a question as to what it is, or is that what that statement is? Is that the?
You want the whole Section 18 of Chapter 76 to be included? I mean, I think we could cite it so people could find it, what we're referring to.
I just thought it'd be useful to have it attached, but if you want to cite it, that's fine.
I'll see how long it is. You know, if it's realistic.
Yeah. How extensive is it?
My last thing on the grades, makeup work, the paragraph that begins, "In the situation," the last sentence, "This means it is their responsibility," no, I'm sorry, I'm, "Students who miss the review due to absence and are the test will be required to take the test." There's something missing in that sentence.
"In the situation of test and review for test, the following will apply." "If we're not at the test, we'll be required to take the test."
Which sentence in particular?
I should just say who are at the test.
Number one?
This right here, the paragraph after parts one and two.
"In the situation?"
"In the situation," and it says, "In the situation of test and review for test, the following will apply. Students who miss the review due to absence and are the test will be required to take the test." But that doesn't make any sense to me at all. I'm not sure what.
Yeah, that's a typo, too.
Yeah, so that, thank you.
At our policy meeting, somebody stressed that all of this is applied to a student, and still, after a certain period of time, if the student says, "I made a mistake, I really made a mistake making that choice," that they have some way to reconnect. Do you recall that conversation?
I don't know, I don't follow what you're saying.
Okay.
If a student made a big mistake?
If a student doesn't take up on his opportunities, he goes, he doesn't get it, or for whatever reason, myriad reasons, but then, after his opportunities have ended, it's over for him, somebody spoke at our meeting and said, "Still, there's an attitude that if that student should become awake and said, 'I made a big mistake there,' that there's be some way for that student to get back into school."
I think those things take place. I think with the teacher, and the guidance, and the administrator, I think, you know, working with the student, I think those things do take place, you know, if a student really.
I'm just bringing up the subject.
Yeah, I think what you refer to is, Mr. Hughes had mentioned about students who do have poor patterns of behavior, that the school's focus is always to reengage, that there's opportunities to return to the active program of the school through attendance contracts, through different kind of plans that get them back on track, that they are not necessarily going to be, you know, removed from the roles or anything like that, without many, 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 many steps and opportunities. And as noted, if a student does demonstrate a willingness to reengage, that the school will work with them to find a way to do that.
That's what I see.
Yeah.
Motion to table?
Certainly, seconded. Just to comment on that, I appreciate everyone's thoughts. That's exactly what this process is for. Appreciate it.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous, thank you. Now, the proposal to go into executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 2183, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body that chair so declares, and pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 2187, and comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, attorney-client privilege. Do I hear a motion to enter?
Motion to go into executive session. Only to return.
Do you want to approve the action items?
We got to approve the action items still?
We just bundled.
We did. We did before, we did the bundle and.
We bundled.
Bundled them.
Yes. Ms. Green, is that, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, the proposal is to enter into executive session.
Going to floor, do the email, people don't have to.
All right.
I think, well, are we, do a roll call?
You got to do a roll.
Yes. Mayor DiNatale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes is absent. All unison, unanimous, except for Mr. Hughes.
We are now in executive session, correct?
Yep, we just have to.